First off, the State of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I hear a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All in the favor?
Aye.
Both, okay, carries. Next, the Senate agenda. I hear a motion we approve the Senate agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Senate agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, and also carries. Public comment. Now's the time for anyone who wants to come and address the board, ask to write their name and address for the record. I see no one coming forward. We move on to public hearing. Paul.
This is a quasi judicial hearing and testimony will need to be sworn testimony. Paul Wambler, the interim planning director for about three more days.
Yeah.
But anyway, I've really enjoyed being here in Benson. It was an enjoyable experience. It was a challenging experience, and they're good people down here, and it was a pleasure to work and serve you guys. I thank you for the opportunity. This is supplemental use per request 2025-01 for 228 Gilbert Road. The applicant is Kelly and Lauren Pope, or R. Kelly and Lauren Pope, and the owners are the same. The project area is approximately 6.7 acres. The Johnston County tax ID is 01509036B. The current zoning is residential agriculture, which is carryover from Johnston County zoning when it was taken into the ETJ and R-30 Town of Benson zoning. The planning board hearing was held on April the first, and it was recommended for approval to the commissioners by, there were not nine, no, excuse me, there were eight present and seven voting in favor of it. The adjacent zoning and land uses to the north is residential agriculture and light industrial across the railroad tracks. To the south is residential agriculture and residential R-11. To the east is, and west is both residential RA. There it goes, finally. Well, you know, I've been here a year now, and I'm still have, I started with trouble with this thing, and I still am. A special use permit is to place a manufactured home on a residential property as required by the UDO. It is dictated that in the RA district and the R-30 district with our UDOs that they, it has to be placed by special use permit. The current zoning, I just went through that. I won't bore you to tears with that again, but this is a graphic representation where on the left-hand side of that where it says site is the green area. It's just immediately before you get to the railroad tracks by about 150 feet. And the larger on the right-hand side is out of the future land use map, and as you can see, it's still the proposed land use in the future. And as you can see, it's still, the proposed land use in the future would be lot industrial if rezoning were to be requested. But there's no rezoning being requested for this. The request for a special use permit is to place a manufactured home on a property located within the ETJ of the town of Benson. The residential setbacks are 35 feet from the street, 15 foot from the side interior line, 30 feet for the rear yard. The maximum building height would be 35 feet. The total coverage by building, a lot area by building would be a max of 35 percent. And the impervious surface, including driveways and structures, could not be greater than 50 percent. The access to the property is from Gilbert Road, which is an NC DOT maintained road. The comprehensive land use plan recommends lot industrial, although inconsistent with the land use, the plans, the plan and the surrounding properties are predominantly residential in nature. The physical characteristics of the property is predominantly single-family residential and agricultural uses end zoning all south of the railroad tracks. On November, on March the 25th, at six o'clock, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting and the results for that are included in your packet. Staff comments are that manufactured home on individ- manufactured homes on individual parcels are required to be underpinned with masonry units and must have the towing apparatus removed from the frame. Staff recommendation is upon, recommends approval on the condition that all work to be done in accordance with the town of Benson UDO and the NC Department of Insurance Manufactured Home Division. Town of Benson UDO Article 3, 156, 302-F, established the residential standards. The applicant will also need to obtain a NC DOT driveway permit since it does, the property is accessed from Gilbert Road. This, the council commissioners are asked to consider the recommendation of, to adopt the request and approve it. A special use permit meet, must meet four findings of facts to be approved. And these are listed in your agenda packet. And you must consider each and every one. If the planning board seek, um, excuse me, if the council commissioners seek to recommend approval, the following must be determined to be met. If the planning, if the commissioners seek to recommend denial to the, they must recommend that the following not be met. And those are provided for you. And immediately below that, there's a motion to either approve or deny the request. And with that being said, I'll stand question, open for any questions.
Paul, is this, I don't give what road, is there a house right beside this that's just been auctioned off?
I believe that's across the road.
No, I think it's, isn't it on the same side?
Well, it could be, there is a for, there is a sign there, yes. And on the other side of the road, there is, there's some flag markers up there. And that's what I was thinking about with the flag markers that were on the fence line.
Okay.
But there is a sign there.
Well, you said that, it said in the report earlier, it was eight to zero as far as unanimous, but you said seven to one?
Well, I'm sorry, I misstated that. There was one member that was absent. So there was a total of nine, but it had a unanimous vote of eight. I'm sorry, I misstated that. Thank you for correcting me.
Well, I was just wondering if there was somebody that was actually opposed to it that was sitting there?
No, no.
Okay.
More questions? We do that thing where we ask people that are in favor of the name of the trial.
Um, you need to open it for public hearing.
Okay. Now, now the public hearing, first we'd like to have anyone who's in favor of this to come up and speak. And don't forget to give your name and address.
Matt, this morning, yeah.
Oh, you have this morning?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Lauren Pope. I currently reside at 150 Gilbert Road. I am submitting the application for, to put the mobile home on 228 Gilbert Road. Just to say a word or two, this is family land. I am related to the Gilberts. And so I was just hoping to kind of set some roots down and go ahead and get this approved so we can move forward. Is there any questions I can answer? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to come and speak in favor? Anyone who want to come and speak in opposition? You want, anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Okay. So now we're going to close the public hearing, right?
Yep.
And now, we're discussing among ourselves.
I make a motion to approve the request of a special use permit, SUP 2025-01, 228 Gilbert Road. As written.
We don't have to do the four things, right?
Um, he can, you can say that it meets all four. You can add that to your motion that it meets all four. Kind of needs a fact.
Okay. As long as it meets all four of the fact finding.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pardon. Motion carries. Holiday Inn Express Economic Incentive Grant.
Um, sorry Ike is not here tonight, so I'm gonna present this. We're not going to vote on this tonight. We're just going to hold the public hearing that is needed in order to do an economic incentive grant. If you all recall, when the Hampton Inn came into Benson and got their CO, they had an economic incentive grant. So that Holiday Inn is the same owner. He's asking for the same thing. It's a five-year cascading grant, 50, 40, 30, 50, 40, 30, 20, 15, 10, and 15 and 10, I believe is the number. So it would be, they would pay their taxes and then we would give them our percentage back. Every time we give our percentage back, it has to come before the board and you all have to vote on it. So you're aware of when it's happening throughout the year. But they have to turn in what their tax bill was. They have to show proof of payment. We usually confirm with the tax office and then we send a memo to the board. So we just need to open it for public hearing per general statute rules and make sure that we don't have anybody come forward. And then we'll close it and we'll bring it to you guys in a further date.
Would anyone like to come forward about the Holiday Inn Express Economic Incentive Grant? Anyone like to come forward? Anyone like to come forward? Okay, so closing?
Yeah.
So hearing's closed.
And that's it.
Next, consider approval of advisory board appointment. Angie.
Okay, um, we actually just have the same application for the Art Advisory Board, Deborah Cardone. And what's, if you approve this, then the art award will be.
Great. Any discussion?
I make a motion.
You make it?
Uh-huh.
I make a motion that we approve.
Okay, there's a motion. All in favor? Pardon. Congratulations, Deborah. Okay. Next, town manager report.
So today we had our annual cleanup. I want to thank Matt Smith for getting that together and organizing that. That's kind of been his thing for the last few years. They had, I think, 30 bags of 50.
Thirty plus.
Thirty-plus bags of trash that they collected throughout the town. So you probably saw them early this morning. Those employees that participated weren't able to go home after lunch today. So that gave them a good three and a half weekend for the Easter break. So I appreciate him for doing that. We are closed tomorrow for Good Friday. And I wanted to give a, do a couple of things that I'm needing. So on Thursday, June the 5th, the town of Clayton is holding a Johnston County Town Hall Dinner that you've all been invited to. It would start at, there's a social hour at six and a dinner at 6:30. And I just need to know, Ms. Maxine and Ms. Stack, are y'all going to be able to go? Ms. Cassandra.
When do you need to know?
June 5th. Where do I need to know?
I know you sent that out sometime.
I need to know about May 9th, so. Yeah. If y'all can just let me know.
It'll be nice to go. I haven't been twenty years, but it's usually pretty.
I don't think they've had one in a while.
It's been a while.
Yeah. Every, I've heard, and then I'll, I'll get with Dean. He's not here today, so, okay. The other thing is, I sent an email before, a little bit earlier today, but I did get, get my monthly update from DOT. I got it after our board meeting last week. And he, they were holding off and seeing how we did with the education thing that the police department were doing, which they are complete and they're done doing that. And then they wanted to get an update on what the town was going to do about the trees in question. So Jeremy and I did go walk Main Street yesterday. We are going to replace a tree very close to the drive-in school. It is blocking the roundabout sign completely. We're going to replace that tree. We are going to remove two of the trees on 301 by Benton Hard Company. That, there's just a lot of sign clutter over there. And so we're going to remove those. That's going to happen in the next two weeks at the request of DOT. And then I'm, and I've let Jason know and then we're going to follow back up and kind of see where, if it, if it helps, if people can see the signage, if it helps with any of the accidents. But that's kind of where they are at this point in time. And the Benson catch and release program for the police department is April the 26th. If any of you want to go, get in touch with Greg and Billy. That is usually a really fun community event with some kid, the kids from Benson Elementary. Community Day is coming up. It's May 3rd. And our first sundown and downtown concert held by the chamber is on May the 8th. And it'll be The Embers featuring Craig Woolard. So that's all I got.
Ike's not here.
Ike's not here.
So, wish her health. Anything?
Good.
I'm good.
No, I just, and I hate Paul left when he did.
Me too.
I just want to let him know that thanks for what all he's done because he has really busted his butt up there doing a lot for the town. Yeah. I did not realize he was leaving in, what, three days?
Well, he is not going to be in the office. So he's gonna, so our new planning director starts Monday. He's going to hang with him for a couple of days, get him caught up. And then he's, he's going to be behind the scenes working on the UDO. So you will see him again, just not on a daily basis or at, you know, every board meeting, so.
Well, he has brought a lot of things to my attention or to air attention that really needs to be looked at. Things that are coming up and things that people didn't even know about, so. Anyway, he's done a great job and I appreciate him.
I will let him know.
Yeah.
So all I've got is wish everybody happy Easter. Hope you have a great and safe holiday. And with that, anything else?
Good.
Okay. If I want to make my favorite motion?
I'll make it. I make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor? Pardon.